I will call the regular town council meeting, Ridgeway Town Council, March 12th, 2025 to order and ask for a roll call please.
Councilors Grandley.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Langton.
Here.
Skyler.
Here.
Skoglu.
Here.
Mayor Kurt Meyer.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Thank you. Before we go to additions and deletions of agenda, I want to mention that this is Councilman Russ Meyer's last meeting and I just wanted to thank you for the long years of service on Ridgeway Town Council. Public service is a tough job sometimes and you've done it. You've been a gomins job of working for the town. So thank you so much for all your years of service.
Thank you.
Speech, speech. Not giving. All right. Are there any additions or deletions to or from the agenda?
I have them.
No sir. Okay. Takes us to the consent calendar and a couple of things on there. Is the motion approved?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Go ahead.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. opposed. Motion by that, starting by Paulie. That takes us to public comments. This is established time on the agenda for the public to address council first if anything that is not otherwise on the agenda. Anyone? Krista.
Krista Meyer, 357 North Lena. Still know we've lost a lot of people in the last year. It's been a lot of loss in this town, in this area. One of them being Wanda who just loved the town tremendously. The town is still reeling from that, I think. I saw comments today on the the Everything Wanda page again. Wanda had written down five wishes that she'd given her daughters. And one of those was to have a big ass party. We know we had a good party for her. But everyone's vision and her daughter's vision and everything was a party in the park with, with bands and all that stuff that she loved. So I was thinking about it and I didn't get it in time for the agenda and I can do that for next month if I need to, but to throw out the idea of combining Love Your Valley, just kind of call it a Love Your Valley Wanda Loser or something, just to kind of honor her. And then you already have the beer that she loved and you have the bands and the people. So it'd be a simple way to just kind of give her that big ass party. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Something else that I can put in for agenda item, they'll tell me what needs to happen is that Josh Kenny, who is going to be here tonight. It really suggested that we name the stage for Wanda. I don't believe that as a name now. I saw live on it, it just said Ridgeway Performing Arts, I think, stage. But considering how much she loved the music and dancing and all, all the bands always wanted her there. All the fit or wanted her there for the laugh and all that. I just want to kind of throw that out there for beginning consideration. So.
Thanks Krista.
That's what I had.
Thank you. And I would say just, you know, since the town runs Love Your Valley and you might take that into consideration, a way to maybe include Wanda.
Yeah, that won't be a problem. I can make Love Your Valley happen this year. I'm having a problem getting enough.
Lodging.
Participants. No, I've got the lodging.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And as to naming something in Ridgeway after Wanda, there's been a lot of discussion and that's kind of ongoing. So I'll keep your praise to what direction that goes.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing up our, our beloved Wanda once again.
Still a whole, I think.
Yeah.
They are hard.
All right. Hearing none. That will take us to our introduction of our new administrative assistant, Julie Hugh. Welcome aboard Julie. I saw you introducing yourself to town council earlier and we met at intermission. So, and I've known you for a little while already, but welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. That takes us to policy matters. We have item, one item, item number four, presentation and requested adoption of the Urae County Multi Jurisdictional Evacuation Plan. We have Glenn Moore in Urae County, the manager here to tell us about that. Can they wait Glenn?
Yeah, before Glenn starts, I think, you know, the projector's not going to work without a certain by network. Hopefully it comes on soon. But Glenn was nice enough to put all the PowerPoint through you all. It should be in the packet. So hopefully you all can follow that route. For everyone else.
He's your imagination.
We apologize.
All right. So I'll do a, just a quick introduction of it. And I know you guys have the plan in front of you and this has been an ongoing process for about a year and a half developing this plan. So as you guys know, this Urae County, city of Urae and town of Ridgeway all joined together to get this plan developed. It's been about a year and a half in the process of developing.
Should work now. Jay, can Jason hear us?
I can hear you now. Thanks.
Great. Thanks.
So, on conclusion. So, long story short, we've got to work on our public expectations and this plan really gives us a good guideline of how to evacuate and the steps that we need to do to evacuate, but it also gives a really good guideline of where we need help and where we need assistance from folks. So long story short, this plan doesn't highlight every neighborhood in the area and say, this is how you get out. There's a lot of places, one road in, one road out, and it also doesn't say where to go. Because we don't know where folks need to go until we know what danger and hazard is there approaching them and what direction that danger and hazard is going. The last thing we want to do is say everyone in this neighborhood, go to this place and then there's a hazard in between those and people get really confused. So that's why these alert systems, that's why paying attention to what's going on and paying attention to all the messaging is so important because when these disasters hit, we'll be utilizing these plans to reach out to folks and tell them where they need to go. But long story short, if there's fire approaching and in your backyard, get out of that area and then tune in to see where you need to go. And I ask you to adopt this plan.
Thanks, Grant. Do you have any questions for Glenn?
Hi Glenn. When did you say that exercise was going to be?
So our tabletop exercise is September 29th. And the full scale exercise is November 3rd.
What does that go look like?
We have a select neighborhood. We're not advertising exactly what neighborhood at this moment. But we will be reaching out to folks even if you're not in that neighborhood. If you want to be an actor and participate in that evacuation, we will put you in that neighborhood for that day. It will be 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We are going to start in that neighborhood. We're literally going to evacuate, test the road, test the folks coming out while responders going up. We're going to try and make it as full scale as possible, have folks evacuate to the 4H event center. And from there, we will stop and hot wash. We will do a sheltering exercise at some other time because that's a whole nother day of exercise. But it will literally be evacuating as many people who wants to participate from that area to the, the sheltering area and see, test all of our, all of our systems.
And we honed in on a neighborhood not incorporated within so Ridgeway.
Yes.
Slap me. It's not in town.
They will be coming through Ridgeway as the 4H events center is.
Question for you. I noticed, and you just mentioned that this isn't an easy thing to get together. This is not something that is easy to accomplish. And I'm just wondering, what support do you need from us? Is there something that we can do as puzzlers and a town to support this process better?
The, the biggest support that I can ask anyone is to help with that, that public expectations. We, we talk about it. Mayor Clark's probably very tired of hearing me say it. But we talk about that often is just really reaching out to folks and letting them know that you, you see smoke, you see flames. Don't wait for a message to tell you move, you know? But yeah, it's just helping folks just know, know where, where to go from the, just ideally where to go and then also just those expectations. And then obviously, as always, participating in our exercises, participating in our plan writing, as you, you guys have staff and personnel that do so well with that. So.
Yeah, I really liked the line in the executive summary that says, you evacuate to away the threat, not to go to a specific location.
Yeah.
It's all about being prepared, no matter where the threat is, to attend accordingly. Make sure that you have good public information and people know where to go get information and that's, that's what we can do.
And, and just not to harp on it, but I, I literally get phone calls in my office that says, I live here. I'm not going to pick out those places, but I live here. There's one way in, one way out. How are you guys going to get us out? And the answer may be, how are you going to get yourself?
Yeah.
And to be blunt.
I think that's one of those things that we have to remind people that we are a really rural area, right? Versus being in a city where we're getting you onto this, we've got the highway directions, but outside of that, each individual neighborhood area is going to approach things really differently. And that self-sufficiency and neighbor, neighbor connection is, is really important.
And really Paulie, to answer your question, as much as you guys want to help talking to HOAs, talking to different groups, spreading the word of you know, we're all in this together. We really are. We don't, we can't rely on one individual, but we can rely on each other and together we're really strong as a community. And education is key. Yep. Really.
And then, sorry, one more question. It's not necessarily for Glenn. It's more for us. I was looking at the fiscal capability on page something 16. And I noticed that no one in the area has a development impact fee. And I was kind of looking into what that was, what it looked like. And I know we've been talking a lot about the need for kind of figuring out what our development is and in particular, what our development in Ridgeway and the impact it has on water. So I'm wondering if there is an appetite for looking into maybe for next budget season. I know we just got out of the last one. Don't get mad at me, guys. But into implementing a development impact fee, it could potentially pay for water usage of the new developments around me.
But it's worth having a conversation for sure.
Well, and I think about things like, we talked extensively about the railroad alignment and evacuation situation, getting people onto 62 is a really key part of this. With everybody living north of the highway, how do we get them going the direction they need to be going?
They can go 24, that would be best, but you never know where the problems could be.
Or where people, you know, does it get that grandeur? Do you don't lay out each individual neighborhood? So we don't have full control over that.
Well, it becomes clear that we have a lot of work to do just in terms of that education I was talking about. So anybody in the audience have questions, but go ahead on this topic. That's our mitigation. Okay. Well, you motion approve this plan, this timing works. I'm going to approve the Urae County Multi Jurisdictional Evacuation.
Second.
Whatever we're supposed to be doing.
Second. That.
All right. Motion made by Russ, second by Paulie. Go on, fair enough.
Aye.
Right there opposed. That's two members. Thanks Glenn. Thank you guys.
Thanks for your time Glenn.
Yeah, can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
When you add up all the things that Glenn's done over the last few years, evacuation plan, multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, updating the emergency operations plan, page one more.
Call it community wildfire protection.
Community wildfire protection plan, which brought the outskirts of adding in place. Glenn Boyd deserves a round of applause.
You're annual. Good to you Preston. Thanks. And thank you again Glenn. All right. That takes us to a number of public requests and presentations. Thanks for reading it Glenn. Item number five is presentation regarding the Simran Athletic Field Project. Susan Lacy. Number of people from the school here.
Delegating the speaker. Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. We were here about a year ago, I think, presenting about the project. And thank you to the councils as you voted to help support some funding for 1,000 towards the project. We have our, our huge fundraiser in the audience, Leslie Chang. That's part of our committee and we met most of our goal. We're still a couple hundred thousand out, but for a $4 million project, the grants and the funding is significant. And we're here to give you kind of an update where construction is, a little bit about the site and then also as part of being a public school, we do all of our permitting through the state, but there is one thing that the state has asked for, which is the letter that says that the town has supported this project. And Preston, I talked about that. This is Russell, our secondary principal. I don't know if you want to talk Russell, just briefly to what's on that image, if there's anything that you need to know, and then we can show you construction because we did put out an RFP and we selected FCI as our contractors. And if any of you live in River Park area, you may have, we did actually host a meeting that we sent out to our community in the River Park and the other HOA park. Or side. And then we actually attended the HOA last week as well to help our, our neighbors understand what was going on. So we can also, what Preston is, what's is now up on the screen, we have on our school website, Simran Athletic Field link. You can go there and there's lots of, there's the site plan that he's hitting and then we can show you under project, which is where we'll show the construction. And if you hit progress, that actually shows. It's a little small, but it shows the construction that was put up last week. And there are signs. It's now, it's now hard hat only and off limits. I know of a couple of River Park residents who gave their dog one last romp before that fence went up. But maybe we can just, again, the plan is that construction is started and we hope to have it open by the end of August. So it's moving, it's moving fast. Russell and I were just out there yesterday and it's suddenly see all the land being dug up and it's terrifying. But yeah, so maybe, I don't know if there's any questions. I mean, the construction right now, they've dug all the dirt and they will now be bringing in, it's an 18 inch deep. Film. Yeah. Not let Russell speak to that a little bit.
So when we met last time, we talked about, approached you about the synthetic turf. And we tried to make sure it was environmentally as safe as possible in those situations. And so let's talk a little bit about that. So it is a synthetic turf. It has 18 inches of class two gravel. Then there is another three inches of a more finer gravel. And then there's another inch of an even finer gravel that they call washed gravel. Okay? And then that's where the turf then lays down. Then on top of the turf, there's sand. There is a little rubber and sand mix. And then there is a product called Cool Play, which is a calcium carbonate material that actually helps the keep state, keep the temperatures down on that field. If you know anything about them, I mean, this can really lower the temperature up to we don't get to these temperatures, but it can lower at 25 to 35 degrees because it keeps it cooler. So we're not going to be generating heat out there either. This is a vertical drain system. If you remember originally when we proposed, we thought we were going to put a pad on the bottom, but we went with this vertical drain system because it actually cut our use of rubber in half. And so that was really important to us is to use as little rubber as possible. And what the vertical drain system does is it, you can have horizontal drain systems or vertical drain systems or a combination. We are sort of accustomed to horizontal drain systems, meaning it just sort of flows out to the sides. And this vertical drain system, when you think of all the layers it has, it actually retains all, any of the rubber that's in there is supposed to retain it and everything drains down instead of out. We also just to make sure, ensure this, we do have, you can see it barely on this one. On the east side, northeast side, there is a very large detention pond. And so this pond drops to a level of eight feet at its lowest point. And that is where the field would drain if there is any drainage that goes into it. So it will not overflow into the ravine or down into the river. It's the intention. This was based off an idea from Steamboat. Steamboat Springs, their field is right adjacent to the river and they did the same thing. And we actually had conversations with them. They actually are seeing very little runoff. It's actually working very well there. So, and their project was built three or four years ago, maybe five now. Time's gone fast. So, and that's a large, I was out on today with FCI. That's a large, they were looking at going, that is a really large detention pond. You're never going to fill it. So the nice part about it too is we actually are going to make, we're going to invest in this from an educational perspective. And our students are actually going to be studying environmental science classes and potentially even our biology classes. We'll be studying that and what's the changes are. Is it actually, are there rubber ponds in it? Okay? So it's not something that we're just going to, oh, we're covering it. We're actually going to make it into an educational experience for our students. I mean, that's, that was the main thing that was a good, a really a concern that we wanted to address and we feel like we've addressed that. So.
Boulder and Longlaw, also the, the company we ended up going with have similar, have similar fields there. And they were the ones that really advised who play some of these decisions will like the costment of a little bit, but it seemed like the right.
But it was our focus. So, I mean, we've seen this. It's, it's happening, happening very fast. Wish we'd get more snow because the weather has allowed it to happen. But you know, questions you might have and as Susan alluded to, we're just looking, just first to say thank you. And second, you know, they just wanted to, the, the state just wants to know that y'all supported this and we do know that you support it. They want to learn. That's how they want to grant. So. Any questions? Anything else? Any questions up here?
Got a question. So will they retaining ponds actually have water in them?
No, it's actually called a detention pond. No, it's actually called a detention pond. I learned that. I've never heard of it. It's a dry pond.
No skeeter breeding.
No.
It's a big project that they require.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that the Wetterhorn project also had a requirement.
Anybody else have questions up here? Anybody in the audience?
There was one comment on here about possibly negotiating some more land from the nearby neighbor. It's not me, but I think it is the HOA, isn't it?
It was never about the land.
So acquire additional land to allow the access road in Park area to shift.
It's the neighbor asking us if we would give it to them. That is, the neighbors pause on the property, which I think at some point they plan to develop. And our answer was when you plan to develop and you have a vision that goes through the PNC, then we can talk.
So that's not quite on the hill there.
Yeah, I think, I think that they were advised to use their emergency somewhere.
If you look at that, the drawing is actually pretty accurate. If you see the dotted line to the left, to the left of the road, that current road that you're used to walking down is to the, is the dotted road and the new road moves a little bit more north.
Into the existing field.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge will definitely be once it is built, it isn't a dog park. It will be absolutely a resource for the neighbors and community to use, but it's also not a place for elk anymore or deer or so, you know.
Actually, the elk and deer responded well.
There's no grassland.
The fence, the fence is there and yeah.
Used to be fertilized.
Oh, is that where, mine too.
Okay, anybody else have questions? All right, thanks. Thank you. And Wesley, thanks for all your.
We look forward to you using as walking, it would be great walking.
Thanks for taking all the environmental stuff into consideration. It's really appreciated.
Takes us to item number six. Presentation, she's so ready to go. Presentation regarding Homegrown Pathways Spark Lab Pre-accelerator Program.
I have a special guest, she'll come in later.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Taylor Pointer, Director of Operations and Communications for Homegrown Pathways. We're a newly founded organization, actually founded here in Ridgeway. And this is our small but mighty team. So Colin Lacy is our founder and CEO. He's been leading work entrepreneurial efforts at the intersection of workforce development and education for over fifteen years now. He's also a Ridgeway resident. Our colleague Melissa Calhoun is our managing director and she is based in Grand Junction. She's been working in higher ed and educational access space for over a decade. And then I'm kind of the odd duck of the group, but I'm, my background's environmental engineering and water wastewater operations turned management. And it's actually during my time as a manager, trying to bolster our skilled trades workforce, I got to work with young people and really found this passion for working at the intersection of workforce development and education as well. So our mission as an organization is to drive economic mobility by connecting rural Colorado youth and young adults to quality career and entrepreneurial pathways within their home region. Next slide. So we're talking about Spark Lab today, which is our youth pre-accelerator that we just piloted. In order to do that, we actually teamed up with Startup Colorado, which if you're not familiar, they are the state's leading provider of support and financial resources for rural entrepreneurs. They've been successfully delivering Idea Factory, which is their own pre-accelerator model. It's a virtual cohort. They've been leading that for a couple of years now, but it's more adult facing and for folks who have kind of a developed business model already. They saw interest from young people, but didn't quite have the means to accommodate them within this Idea Factory. So we teamed up with them and a curriculum designer, Jess Morrison, to design initially kind of a mop, a mirror of Idea Factory, but really turned into its own program called Spark Lab. Next slide. So Spark Lab is a free pre-accelerator program designed for young entrepreneurs aged fourteen to twenty-four. It's for folks that either have an active business or just an early business idea. The model focuses on refining their business concepts and identifying their asks and preparing for a three-minute pitch for the culminating pitch event. It's implemented over the course of six weeks with approximately twelve to fifteen hours of engagement time, depending on the participant. And then importantly, a big goal of ours is to connect young entrepreneurs to other regional resources as well as each other. So building this young entrepreneurial ecosystem is a really important tenant to Spark Lab as well. In recognition of their time, their dedication, and just to kind of empower them further, we actually provided stipends to participants. So they received two hundred dollar Visa gift cards, mileage reimbursements, and then welcome and launch packages that consist of foundational books and leadership and entrepreneurship. That's the welcome package featured there on the screen. Next slide. And so this slide is just to kind of give you guys an overview of the actual structure and we'll dive more into the pilot cohort in the next slide. So our cohort is made up of ten to fifteen innovators. We have one weekly meetup, that's an hour and fifteen minutes each. It's an in-person meetup with a virtual option. We also have one weekly virtual optional office hour and then an accompanying participant guide that's highlighted on the screen there. All the pre-work, all the assignments, if you will, are all linked within that guide and it's kind of a living document that we utilize throughout the entire program. And then we also included individual mentorship meetings. And that's where Colin, Melissa and myself served as kind of thought partners to our participants, where we could further refine their business model or refine and edit their pitch for the, the final pitch event. And week one is all about introductions and foundations. So we are bringing folks from across the west central region. So a big part of that building, young, the young entrepreneur ecosystem is really building trust within the cohort. So week one is all about building trust and light touch on entrepreneurial mindset. And then week two, we actually bring the real life rural entrepreneurs into the space. And we sit them at different tables, we have our cohort break up into small groups, go around to the different entrepreneurs, ask them all types of questions about growth mindset. What did you do when you failed this one time? How did you recover from that? And what does it take to actually run a business here on the western slope of Colorado? And then week three is all about pitch preparation, where we kind of break out their pitch into different elements. We kind of dive more into their why, what and how of their business and start figuring out their market audience, their pain, their gain and their call to action for the pitch itself. And then week four, we continue into that activity, but we started off with, by bringing in bank representatives and capital venture representatives to actually talk with the young people and help them expand their own funding networks. And these are folks that are here on the western slope of Colorado. They're providing services on the western slope of Colorado. And our innovators were able to ask to, how can I as a young person tap into these resources? Week five is all about feedback and refinement of their pitch. So they come in prepared with a draft version of their pitch. And we really focus on that peer feedback in the session. And something that's really cool too, as a part of the pre-work leading up to week five, they're really focusing on entrepreneurial mindset, growth mindset and durable skills throughout. And you could really see that synthesized in the peer feedback that they were giving each other in that session. So that was really cool to see. And then week six is the pitch event. So next slide. So our first pilot cohort for Spark Lab, we had a lot of interest throughout the region. We had nineteen applicants in total. We advertised from Erie all the way up through Grand Junction. Our wonderful intern Niva over here actually helped pull together some flyers for that effort. And we got nineteen applicants in total all over the region. Twelve participants actually enrolled, so their ages were fifteen to nineteen. And they were a mix of out of school, public school, homeschool and college students. Five of them already had operating businesses and participants came from six different towns, four different counties. And notably, three innovators came from Ridgeway. We hosted hybrid and in-person meetups at the Alt Space in Montrose. So that's that coworking space in Montrose here too. We're both cohorts, the virtual and the in-person were actually able to interact together. That was super important to us, but to make sure that even if they were using the virtual option, they were still meeting with the same folks. Huge shout out to Alt Space, by the way. They let us use the space for free and they're uplifting young entrepreneurs because of that. And so for the pitch event itself, we were able to raise ten thousand dollars in large part thanks to the Mortgage Family Foundation and our matching campaign with them. All of that ten thousand dollars went back to our twelve innovators. So once they gave their pitch, we awarded prizes. And in the audience, we had over sixty folks in attendance. A lot of community leaders, including parents, educators, superintendents, Susan over here, chamber leaders, Ashley was there, bank presidents, mayors, John, thanks for coming, and venture capital representatives. And I just want to emphasize that by having all these community leaders in this space, we're really empowering these young folks and really giving them confidence to, you're seeing people take the time to sit down and listen to what they have to say. And these are important folks, they've got a lot to do. So that was really cool to see the community come together for them. Um, next slide. Perfect. And I just want to quickly highlight our Ridgeway innovators. So Maddie Miller with Rider Block, she's a senior at Ridgeway Secondary School and she's extremely passionate about the written word. She's developed a nonprofit that's aiming to create community for young writers to explore skills because she wants to see more creative writing opportunities for young people in this area. And she actually has her first participant, Adava Letha, who's very interested. She's a middle schooler who's very disappointed that she doesn't have creative writing in class or in school. And so we were able to award her six hundred fifty dollars to actually launch a pilot program, which is going to be a writing competition that she's creating. And then Sunny Wick, who's a sophomore, created mountain valley photography in order to create more equitable access to family portraits in our area. Photography is very expensive. I just had a wedding in the mountains. It was quite pricey and his goal is for everyone to have access to these beautiful photos in the mountains. We're supporting him through lighting equipment, marketing and more professional development opportunities. And last, but certainly not least, Niva, do you want to come talk about Career Me?
Yeah. If you're being here, Niva.
Hi, my name is Niva Hines and I am one of Taylor's interns. Like she said, we helped, Maddie and I, we're both her interns. We helped put together some of the ideas for Spark Lab, we helped put together the flyers. And, and then we got to benefit, benefit from it in the end. My business is called Career Me and it is a platform that helps businesses and interns come together. It's kind of like a LinkedIn, but if you've ever used LinkedIn, you know, it's not built for people with no experience like me. I don't even have my high school diploma yet, so. Coming soon, but it's, this whole Spark Lab production coming to students has really opened a new world for me. I won eight hundred dollars as a part of my seed funding and I was also made Startup Colorado's Youth Ambassador. Ambassador, thank you. I was made Startup Colorado's Youth Ambassador. And every month since then, I have attended youth startup, startup and women's startup and rural startup meetings with Startup Colorado. I also changed my major to business administration, which I didn't tell you. It has really opened the world for me. And meeting people from these different areas has taught me that business and entrepreneurship is a way for students and young people to speak their voice. This, my business is coming out of something that I was having trouble with. Same with Maddie, same with Sunny. It's always for us to be able to speak our voice and be powerful in a way that we didn't know existed. So, thank you, Taylor, and thank you all for being here.
Yeah, attending the event was so impressive. I just thought it's the coolest thing. Not only are you guys doing great work, but every team that presented was just so impressive.
They really were.
The energy they put into it and obviously the mentorship that you guys have given them and support. It was, it was really powerful. And I, I basically asked these guys to come get this presentation because I think the potential power of this program is just incredibly far reaching.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience?
I've got more. That's okay, if you'll let me keep talking. So I just wanted to highlight some survey outcomes and Niva just obviously gave some amazing insight to her experience, but we did see a, from the survey results, increased improvement in self-perceived communication skills, confidence, community connectedness and understanding of available resources. A hundred percent of our innovators shared that they would recommend Spark Lab to a friend. A hundred percent said that their Spark Lab experience advanced their business. And we had an over a nine average program rating from participants. And then I just wanted to highlight a quote from one of our participants, Adava Letha. He shared, "We have learned so much and met so many great people. I can say without a doubt, I will take everything I've learned here and utilize it in my entrepreneurial life. This program that you all have created is truly amazing." And this was unsolicited after the pitch event, just coming off the emotions. He sent that to us and it was super heartwarming. And this is why I switched over from engineering and poop water. This is so fun. And then next slide. It's just something else I really want to emphasize. So a hundred percent of our participants shared that they're not, that they're more likely to take action on a future business idea as a result of Spark Lab. And that really comes back to our thesis of let's empower these young people, let's give them a voice, let's give them a stage to share their voice more so. And really uplift their ideas because their ideas are only going to benefit us as a region. And then some other points I just want to highlight, they have met with the network of funders, they have built their own network of funders. And importantly, they now identify that they have peers who can support them in starting a business. And just really want to quickly highlight some regional visibility. We got featured in Grand Junction Business Times. Erie County Plain Dealer did a wonderful piece, their intern Chloe through Erie High School did an awesome piece in the business section on us and Niva too, they highlighted her business as well. And then that's actually Maddie working on her pitch canvas on the front page of the Montrose Press. So just exciting to see, see the region take that all in. And then I just want to touch on our vision for scale. So we see entrepreneurship as an essential pathway to economic mobility, specifically in rural Colorado. That can include not only new business creation, but also plugging into existing rural startups and innovation focused companies. Our goal with the support of the funding community is to refine and scale this model across rural Colorado in partnership with Startup Colorado School Districts, including rural school district collaboratives like Western Western Slope Schools Career Collaborative, workforce centers, post-secondary institutions and industry. And then we already have a waitlist of eager young innovators ready to join the next Spark Lab. And we're working with educators to complete a version that can be partially embedded within a regular school day course. We did talk with a lot of entrepreneur teachers that were in attendance and just the fact that they were, we were able to bring a pitch event with a bunch of different community leaders into the room and different funders into the room was something they hadn't quite been able to tap into yet. So we're seeing how we can expand that opportunity. And that is all I have. So next slide, if any of you guys have any questions, feel free to email me. You can stay in touch with us through our quarterly newsletter on our website. Also, it helps us a lot if you follow us on LinkedIn. But stay tuned, we're doing a lot of stuff here in the area, so.
Okay, nice job. Any questions in the audience or on Zoom?
It's exciting to see our kids being well. Maybe I can plan tomorrow night to the school.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Taylor. That was amazing. And thank you, Niva. All right, that takes us to item number seven, request for permanent access into the Erie County Ranch History Museum and which they rarely see.
I'm more into sports.
Thanks, guys. I'm Joan Chismar, the board president of the Erie County Ranch History Museum. Thanks, guys. I'm Joan Chismar, the board president of the Erie County Ranch History Museum. And thanks for your time this evening. We, the Erie County Ranch History Museum, as well as the Ridgway Railroad Museum, are here to request permanent access to our privately owned sixteen acre parcel east of Robert Street, across the street here. Something that we have been denied since two thousand nineteen. We have been limited to temporary access status renewed annually. The reason for this request is that the denial of permanent access is prohibiting both museums from beginning several important projects and has been curtailing our added growth. With our current temporary access designation, the town's hindering our ability to carry out expansion plans for both museums and the fundraising for those projects. With this encumbrance, we can't move forward on capital campaigns or begin to complete our respective museums as illustrated in these site plans and conceptual drawings in front. The museum first shared these renderings to the town staff in a scheduled meeting back in two thousand twenty-one. We realized that we jumped past the town's regular protocol by not first requesting a meeting with staff. However, both museums and the town's owner, town owners, excuse me, the landowner's attorney have met numerous times over these past five years with staff and have made no measured progress. We collectively chose to bring our concerns, this important permanent access request straight to town council. We'd also like to mention that we'd like to set up a secondary meeting with the council and to willingly address the Riverwalk Agreement through our northeast section of our property, right beside the river, which the town had proposed. We agreed to that, drafted, signed, and gave the document to the town, who initially were pleased with it a few years ago. We would like to move that forward as well. Time is of the essence for this dilemma to be rectified as costs have spiked since we first shared our vision for a combined railroad and experiential ranch museum complex with the town. What we're preserving, creating, and adding to Ridgway and our community cost the town nothing. The museums highlight our cultural heritage as we contribute to our economic vitality and civic capital. These were some of the state requirements the town needed to, needed for becoming a main street in the period district. I'd like to now introduce Noble Heller, who's been generous in helping us with our future expansion plans to speak to the council. Thanks.
Good evening. Why me? I had an extensive thirty-three-year career with Major Retailer, US Retailer, and have been involved with all kinds of zoning, planning, and other issues like code interpretation, PUDs, TIF districts, those type of things with literally communities from coast to coast. And I started working with Joan probably about five or six years on this. I was somewhat instrumental in finding Chamberlain Architects to do the renderings. It helped with the site planning. Chamberlain Architects being out of Grand Junction, they were the firm that did the Ute Indian Museum renovation. Always a question as to whether or not the venue is going to be able to put forward some of these questions and/or is this the right venue to turn around and engage town council, okay, in a dialogue about why we are actually operating under a temporary access agreement. There's been different things explained to us, and both Bo and Preston have been generous with their time in previous meetings to talk about it. But we really can't come to any kind of understanding as to the reasons for the position of, at least Preston and Bo's position, that we need to do this temporary access agreement in order to get access onto the property. Now, there is one permanent access on the north end of the property, but as this property would be developed as the site plan shows, it would probably require at least three access points off those sixteen acres, two of which would be emergency vehicle and service entrances, and one which is the obvious, which would be at Charles Street and Railroad Street. And that's a one that we're basically today working on the temporary access agreement. So, again, not sure if this is the correct venue to be able to have that discussion, but what we wanted to do was bring it to the attention of the town council and see if, in fact, through discussion either here this evening, okay, or within your own private sessions and stuff, to see if, in fact, we can come to a resolution on this particular issue. We'd be more than happy to engage, you know, with whomever in order to get this behind us. This is one of the two issues that really hold us up from being able to do the capital campaigns and move forward project. More than happy to sit and discuss what the project all entails and stuff, and what the idea is behind it, and, you know, how long it's going to take to raise all the funds in order to, you know, basically put together the entire plant. But, you know, really, the question this evening, one of two major ones, one is the Riverwalk, which we want to discuss at a future meeting. The one this evening would be the temporary access agreement. This temporary access agreement is renewed on an annual basis and is revocable at any time within thirty days by the town. Can't really raise funds on a property that you can't access. So, really asking the town council to turn around and help us through this process. And again, I know we're, you know, usually as staff, and eventually it comes to you, you know, presentation. But we really don't see how we can come up with a solution on this. I've done a fair amount of research. Railroad Street, its history, the deed, the quick claim, quick claim deed that was done in nineteen seventy-nine from the railroad dedicating it to the town. Okay, so, again, I'm not sure, you're ready this evening to talk about this issue, but we really need to move forward on this. It's been at least five years of serious work by the Ranch History Museum in order to try and move this thing forward.
Okay, thanks, sure. And let me just start by saying from our side of the table, there should be no doubt in anyone's mind about what the town and me personally, and all of the council up here, thinks about these two ventures, the railroad museum and the Ranch History Museum. We recognize how valuable they are to the town. We, I personally would say they are incredible. What you, Joan, you've been able to accomplish, work with Charlie, are going to get access to the property and what they've done since then is unbelievable, really. And totally understand why you're trying to push the issue. That said, I think you and I understand that it's this question of the trail easement that has always been the hang of. And I would ask either Bo or Preston to give the town's perspective on that. And then I really think, while I understand that you brought this here tonight to try and, you know, push this in, getting something done, getting something accomplished that's not temporary. The proper way to actually accomplish it is going to be outside of this meeting, with a meeting with staff and you guys. But in the meantime, I'd like to hear from either you or Preston.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I'm happy to kind of give an update from the staff's perspective, and I know that Preston has thoughts as well. So, from staff's perspective, I think we've been trying to be very supportive of these two projects and the two tenants that are on the property. With respect to it being a little bit premature, it is that there's no development application that's been filed as of yet. We've encouraged both museums to get a development application filed, because that's one aspect where we could look at access. The other thing that you indicated is there's this agreement or, you know, a draft agreement in place with respect to a trail easement. I've spoken to the landowner's attorney with respect to that agreement. There's still one condition that, you know, is a holdup, which requires trail connectivity and a third party to, you know, consent to that agreement. And there's really no foreseeable movement on that. So, unfortunately, we're at loggerheads, and the last I spoke to the landowner's attorney, which was last month, there was still no solution in that thing. So, you know, staff is certainly willing to sit down with the two tenants and the museums to talk through these issues, but we've not been presented with anything that suggests that there's a solution to the trail easement, nor has there been a development application.
To clarify that, though, there is an agreement that was done on these, for the sixteen acres, that is the museum properties. The agreement you're looking for is in the property north of that, of which we have no control.
And look, I'm really not trying to debate this, but one of the conditions for the landowner granting a trail easement on the property is that the town also get easement from the property owner to the north. And we've presented and asked, hey, can we separate these issues? And the answer is continuing them, no.
No, Bo had a great summary, and just want to emphasize that our charge from Bo and I's standpoint comes from you all, the town council. So, I just want to make that note, and we're always willing to meet and have those conversations, but we'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay. I will say I've had a couple of conversations with Bruce Domigan, who's helping out with the railroad museum. And I explained to him what we've just been talking about in terms of the question about the easements and trail. And he came back with the suggestion of maybe having the easement cut across the northern northeastern corner of the property where we've been asking for it. But then having it go all along the northern boundary of the Huron property and just meet railroad there somewhere between the library and parking. And that could be something the council could consider, since we're probably not going to get the easement from the Navin property orange to the north, and it would be a way to continue the trail that comes from Lawrence Park, does not have a just dead end of the Huron property. So, I throw that out just to someone that was brought up in conversations between Bruce and I. But again, I don't think we're going to resolve anything tonight. I think what you've accomplished tonight, in my opinion, is you've lit a fire under us again to try and find, figure out a solution. I mean, it's been languishing for years, as you say, but it's, you know, it's and we're, it's a complicated group of entities involved, and it's not any one entity that's holding it up.
And our problem is that we're not the landowner, just Lucy. We cannot force the landowner to do anything. So, you know, I mean, one of the solutions the town has is, you know, you have the ability to use kind of nature and delay to take what you want to continue the Riverwalk.
That is not going to be an expedient result to give you what you want.
But it's going to take two years, so.
Well, yeah, we've already been sitting here for at least five years, you know, having discussions with the town about trying to move this thing forward. Again, I don't want to be argumentative, but we're sort of stuck in the middle here with the inability to be able to solve. Right, so again, I think what needs to happen is a meeting needs to be set up between the town manager and the town attorney, presumably Charlie Ergen's attorney, and any other representative of you guys that wants to be there, and sit down and talk about potential options, because it looks like the option that we've been trying to get for these last three or four years isn't going to happen, so. But we're not going to solve it tonight.
Is, may I ask, so to be able to have permanent access to our parcel, we have to solve your request for the Riverwalk?
No, no, we've not said that. I mean, so it goes back to the other thing that we don't have with this, which is any sort of development agreement. So, you know, if there was a development application that was submitted with respect to, you know, we don't have a sketch plan, we don't have any sort of subdivision, anything along those lines. So, if those things were submitted, access would be evaluated as a component of this. So, no, town's position has not been that we're withholding access to the property in order to get a trail easement.
Bo, is that complicated by, you know, the discussions that we have had with staff about the potential that this would be following the umbrella of the PUD process? And is that the same development agreement that would apply if you're going down that route of PUD?
We, I mean, we can't speculate in an open meeting, because you all haven't submitted an application. So, if an application is submitted, we would review it, and as a component of that, we will look at access.
Okay. And thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Give me two minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Hale Houghton, the president of the Railroad Museum. Additionally, I manage all of the, coordinate all the trail activities through the Great Trail Route, so I'm kind of involved with both of them. Firstly, essentially what we're trying to do is raise money for leasehold improvements. Now, when you don't have permanent access, that's a level oners, because people aren't going to belly up. We have spent a substantial amount of money, an excessive four hundred thousand dollars to date, which doesn't include the steam engine, which will be here. And I can tell you, that number dwarfs what we spent already. I can't tell you when that's going to happen. I'm as frustrated as anyone. But it is important that we get permanent access. In regards to the trail, obviously, they're unrelated. There are alternatives. We deal with them all the time. We run into property issues. They're very difficult to resolve. A lot of times, we can't resolve. We put up a staircase. We had to take it down, because there was a small protrusion. Those things happen. If you can't negotiate a settlement, then you got to go on to Plan B. I had mentioned to Bruce that there are alternatives that I would be more than willing to talk to people about. You know, what's Plan B? You know, I want to see the trail more than anyone else, because that's, you know, what we do in the summer. So, I agree, we should get together and try to figure out both of these solutions. And then lastly, we are in the process of preparing the site plan, which we hope to have, well, I was hoping to have it already, but they're finishing it up, so we should have it in your hands in the very near future.
Great, thank you. And thank you for presenting. I understand your frustration. We empathize. I think it's obviously been a long, complicated road, and hopefully we can we can find the end of it here soon. I think there needs to be some action on your part in terms of an actual development plan that will trigger discussing access, and then discussion between, obviously, Mr. Ergen's attorney and the town attorney about how access can be agreed to. So, I don't perceive it being possible or even that difficult, but once all the pieces fall in place, that's what it's going to. So, any comments or questions from the board?
Joan and I have met a few times to kind of chat about this. And I agree, I think that there is a mutually beneficial way that the town and museums can meet in the middle with a public access across that property, whether it be here in front of Town Hall, whether it's on the north end of the property. I think, I think there's ways that this can be solved, and hopefully you and I will keep talking. Hopefully, we can take some of what was just said tonight and kind of continue with that. You know, and I'm being selfish, because I love walking all over town, along the River Trail, having access to cross over to the park. From here in town to Lawrence is, that would be, I think, is such a cool little thing for everybody in this community. And so, it is a little silly. And so it is a little silly that this has gone on as long as it has. And I know that this goes way back, way before I was anything. And I think it's time, I mean, I think we can gain support to meet in the middle with this. So let's continue. Let's, let's.
We'll continue talking and.
Maybe schedule a meeting where we all get together.
I would like that. I very much like that because there have been some suggestions. And the suggestion for the river walk, it's a river walk. And so you wanted to go along the river. And so, you know, and it was not going to impede any of the plans that we have on the property. Going on the northern portion, that's problematic because we have already a metal corral there that we'd be using.
And potentially through the gate right here along the south edge and runs along the fence line kind of on the south edge of your boundary.
Again, I also think what's really important right now is we're speculating on these things, right? We, when you have a site plan, there are all sorts of triggers that can be put into place in the development process that could find things to be mutually beneficial. We're getting way out over skis.
Yeah.
I think that's really on you guys to work with the property owner and to think about what that might look like. And then that will be hashed out during the development process to find ways to ensure that river walks can happen and access can happen and fundraising can happen. But really, it sounds like that's where we are in terms of how do we do this?
Yep. One last opportunity for everybody in the audience here on Zoom or here in the room. I have comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate being here.
Let's keep talking, Jeff.
All righty then, that takes us to item number eight, proclamation for International Dark Sky Week. It's got my name on it. That is in the packet. And I would just point out, I was actually meeting with Ashley Perkins in the chamber yesterday because she's working on a piece, a story about the details of our history of supporting dark sky efforts. And I went back into my notes and found that our original discussions about this led by, well, I wouldn't know the name before, but actually. Kennedy, Jim Kennedy, Howard Green, they were some of the first people. It goes back to 2001, 2002. So almost 25 years. And now we are a dark sky community certified by the IDA. And I just think it's really important that we continue to emphasize that. It's a draw for tourism. It's, it's just incredible to be able to walk out and see the Milky Way in the middle of our town. When I learned probably 10 years ago that they say that something like 80% of the population of the world has never seen the Milky Way because they live in cities with so much life pollution that they can't see the Milky Way. And that just blows my mind when you think about how beautiful the dark sky is here. So what I have in front of you is a proclamation declaring April 21st to 28th, 2025 as International Dark Sky. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation without some. I think it's a given why we want to do this. It's an important part of the Jewish identity and something we've been working on for a long time. Unless there's some questions, I'd ask for a motion.
Did we get everything worked out? Did all the new stuff go on in town with the lights, just to make sure we're still under codes?
I think the green. Or greenhouse, they weren't under code because they weren't going on.
Yeah, the greenhouse, we need to get into that right now.
I was mostly talking about like, yeah, the spirit of the greenhouse and.
Yeah, I just have all been to IDA satisfaction and our satisfaction. I'll move to adopt the official proclamation, claiming the week of April 21st, 28th, 29th, International Dark Sky. Second, all right, motion by Terry, second by Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, Pastor Sianusley. The next up is another proclamation. We had a gal from this organization that was going to be here, but I think she probably had to hop off by now. Is Jesse still on?
No, Jesse's.
So I told her that I would cover this one as well. And again, you can read the proclamation, but, and I don't know how many of you are organ donors, but I am. And I was like, a number of us are. And I think it's really important that we recognize the value of that. And we officially declare, proclaim, declare April 2025 as National Donate Life Month. Any questions about this?
The only thing I will say is last year, my aunt had a traumatic injury to her brain. She fell, she hit her head, and she was declared brain dead. And that was terrible. But she was an organ donor. So every single piece of her got to go help other people. She saved eight lives and helped hundreds of other peoples with use of skin, retinas, every corneas, I mean, everything. And one of those ended up being a friend of hers.
Wow.
That he, his kidneys were malfunctioning properly. He couldn't donate. She was not a match, but because of her request that she had.
Dominant one.
It dominated. So she got to save a friend's life. Not a bad idea.
Again, questions, comments from the audience? No, just a motion.
And we move to proclaim. I move to proclaim April 2025 as National Donate Life.
Okay. Motion by Paul, second by Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Pastor Sianusley, thank you. That takes us to item number, we're into policy matters now. Interviews of Sustainability Advisory Board candidates, and I quite remember. I believe we just have one applicant, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, questions?
Yes, sir, I think, one thing, Christina Lemon was the only individual to submit a letter of interest for the open spot on the Sustainability Advisory Board.
And is Christina in attendance? Oh, she's here in the room. Welcome, Christina, come on up. Have your letter of interest in front of us. And we thank you for that. And I guess I would just ask if there's anything else you want to add.
Well, first of all, nice to meet you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for reading.
I'm excited to be a new resident of Ridgeway in a couple of years now. And just the passion and energy you all have for sustainability is pretty exciting. I spent about 25 years in the industry. My background is sustainable landscape design and construction. And what that becomes my passion of all sorts of things. So I've had a good variety of career experiences. And if I can bring any assistance or support to projects, I'd love to be a part of that for this community.
Great. You sound like a perfect fit. Pastor Sianusley?
And you're a grant writer?
Yes, I have had.
You're hired.
Wonderful privilege of learning how to write grants. Absolutely, that's a shame.
Take advantage of that. Anybody up here have any questions for us?
I'll move to appoint. I'm sorry. Christina Lemon has to move to the Sustainability Advisory Board for a three-year term. Are you signing up in three years?
Yes.
Motion by Terry, second by Josie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Maybe that takes us to item number 11, First Reading Ordinance Number 01-2025, Mending Section 7-40 zoning regs and Section 8-5 short-term rentals of Ridgeway Municipal Code. Welcome, Angie.
Thank you. Well, this item came to you all last month, but I was unable to recommend that the ordinance was introduced because the planning commission didn't have the opportunity to review a definition that was added to the ordinance. And that definition is for owner occupancy. So I'll just wait a sec.
Yeah, there's a PDF.
Is it not working?
Somebody's powered it, it's not set up on this.
You all did see the red lines last week, and they are in front of you. So Preston, do you want me to get a PDF or should we just?
I'll get it.
Okay. We went over it a little bit last time. So for background, updates to the short-term rental regulations were prompted by recent updates to the accessory dwelling unit regulations in the Ridgeway Municipal Code. There's a few code provisions that overlap. So there was a need to kind of clarify, make some edits. And then we've made a few substantive changes. So I'll walk through those. Modifications are in both Chapter 7 and Chapter 8. So I don't know if I should wait. Okay. Well, in the staff packet, it has other red lines attached. And then it also walks you through the changes. So I guess I'll start with Chapter 7, specifically under 746N. The changes include adding the downtown service, the DS zone, to general commercial and historic business zones so that multifamily structures in those zoning districts can be used as short-term rental if they're complying with other regulations. And then clarifying the owner occupancy requirement for all zones other than DS, general, commercial, and historic business. Whether there's separate structures on a property or there's various units within one structure, one unit needs to be owner occupied in order to be eligible for a short-term rental license for any of the units. And then there was a section that's titled Performance Standards. So that section contains some standards relating to maximum number of bedrooms and guests and an owner's agent requirement. Those were unchanged, but we did move them to the licensing portion in Chapter 8. So then I can pause for a second. Right, so that was all of Chapter 7, red lines. And now we're on to Chapter 8, perfect, Preston, thank you. So in 85, modifications included adding a distinction between room and bedroom. And then if you scroll down a little bit, if you don't mind, a little bit more, this section, the title was changed from supplemental regulations to licensed administration because the 746 chapter is called supplemental regulations. So just adding some distinction between those. And then adding a note, if you scroll down, means that if a license is revoked, that a new license will be needed, but there may not be one available at the time because we have a cap book of the licenses. All right. And then finally, we added the definition to 792, general definitions for owner occupied, which means that at least one owner of a property lives on that property as their primary residence for at least nine months out of any 12-month period. And then you can scroll down a little bit. So the planning commission has since considered the revision in the ordinance and the definition for owner occupancy. And their recommendation was unanimous for approval, finding that the criteria for text amendment were met, and they're here on the screen. Staff recommends that town council introduce ordinance 01-2025. And if introduced tonight by town council, staff will bring it to a public hearing at your next meeting for adoption consideration.
Great. Thanks, Angie.
So the owner occupied requirement, that's only if they're planning on short-term renting, right? So if it's like, if they're the main house in ADU, they could both be long-term rented.
Right.
Angie, how will this be communicated to existing licensed holders?
We can send an email or a letter out to all license holders. But I think you asked the question last month of if it affects any licenses that we're aware of. And there was only one that was going to be affected by the owner occupancy definition, so.
Suspicion, I never told.
Well, I, yeah, I guess we haven't talked about it as staff, but we have everybody's contact information for sure.
And one last follow-up to that. So if they are not compliant with the current rules with their existing license holder, they forfeit their license or they have to become compliant, I guess.
We would probably, I guess it depends on the situation, but we would, you know, they would use that license, that active license until the renewal period. And then we would reconsider it.
If it can be renewed after the remainder of their license term, right?
Yeah, that's typical.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions?
No, I was going to ask a comment.
Any comments, questions, any audience? Okay, so a motion. I move to introduce the First Reading Ordinance 01-2025. If appropriate, the ordinance will be brought to the town council at the regular meeting on April 9th. The independent carrying item, potential adoption, and adopted. The ordinance goes into effect 30 days from the approval. Thank you. Motion by Russ, second by, Mr. Gramble. All in favor? Votes? Pastor Sianusley, thank you.
Thanks.
That takes us to item number 12, First Reading of Ordinance Number 02-2025, Amendment in Chapter 11 of Ridgeway Municipal Code Concerning the Sale of Dogs and Cats Born or Raised in Inhumane Commercial Breeding Facilities, Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So before you, as you were saying, is an ordinance concerning sale of dogs and cats born or raised in inhumane commercial breeding facilities. Back at your regular meeting in September, Ms. Joyce Cohen from, I think she's from Durango, and I think she's actually on Zoom, presented information on puppy mills, factory farms, at least what we're referring to as these inhumane commercial breeding facilities. She requested council consider enacting local regulations to ban the sale of dogs and cats that are raised in these factory farms or puppy mills. And at the conclusion of that presentation back in September, staff received direction, collective direction from you all to prepare this ordinance or at least move forward in the conversation. So staff informed by Joyce, who sent us some really good templates for ordinances that have been adopted around the state of Colorado and even beyond. So thank you, Joyce, that was really helpful. Prepared the ordinance before you for your consideration.
Thanks, Preston. Comments, questions? Anything up here, anybody in the audience?
Did you have a good presentation in September?
Pardon me?
I think it was a good presentation in September. You answered our questions.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll move to approve on First Reading, the Ordinance Number 02-2025, an ordinance to town of Ridgeway, Colorado, mending Chapter 11 of Ridgeway Municipal Code Concerning the Sale of Dogs and Cats Born or Raised in Inhumane Commercial Breeding Facilities.
You're moving to introduce.
Sorry.
Your motion is to introduce.
So it's to introduce?
Yeah.
Yes.
First read. Second. Motion made by Terry. Any further discussion, all in favor? Any votes? Pastor Sianusley, thank you. Thanks, Joyce.
And Mayor, I would say this is.
Thank you all.
Rich, you've been here. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, but we were all in favor. So I think you're good to go.
I'm good. Thank you so much. See you at the second reading.
Okay.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, and that moves us along to item number 13, Resolution 2505, Canceling the April Regular Election.
Yes, as you're all aware by now, we had many seats that were opening on the council. Those were held by Polly, Beth, and Russ. And the pre-nomination petitions we received were from Polly, Beth, and Michelle, who is the planning commission chair. So Russ is leaving the council. This is his last meeting. And at the next meeting, we'll be. So Russ is leaving the council, uh, this is his last meeting, and at the next meeting, we'll be giving oaths about this to the council members.
Great, thanks Pam.
This ordinance is, uh, needed just for the council to acknowledge that I have canceled the election and I declared the candidates not nominated. I mean, excuse me.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, thank you.
With regards to the effect on the planning commission, she becomes the ex officio then?
We decide that next month.
Yeah.
Then you're.
We, we, when, at, at, the first meeting after the election every year, we discuss committee pundits and and Russ will obviously know who will become the beginning ex officio member, if anybody else is interested. They'll further add the random and talk. But, you know. Uh, any other questions about this? Now, is there a motion?
Well.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty-five oh-five. Because we're canceling the April regular election.
Second, all right, motion by Terry, second by Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Mrs. Anderson, thank you.
Congratulations, Michelle.
And that's. And. Yeah, congrats to Russ.
All right, uh, I hear fourteen is a discussion regarding setting up a special council meeting for the week of April twenty-eighth. First.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, so, um, staff will work in, uh, with the team at Respect Engineering for them, uh, chose last month for to be reviewed diversion restoration project to develop an RFP that's linked to proposals from qualified uh, firms to provide construction level services will be on that using a construction manager at risk or C Mar. Talked a bit, a little bit about it at the last meeting, uh, C Mar construction delivery method for, uh, the project. Uh, the aim is to get a contractor on board around the time that the, uh, the improvements are at about thirty percent, uh, thirty percent design. Uh, so that the contractor team can be on board and be involved, help inform the remainder of the design. Uh, we've learned a lot just in the last few months, and, and Joanne, our old time engineer, knows, uh, C Mar very well. Uh, but for a project like this, it would be very efficient, effective for us to go that route. So our aim is issued the RFP early next week, or we do it next week. Proposals will be due April fourteenth, and then based on the timeline, we worked out with the Respect team. Um, the request before you is to schedule a special town council meeting the week of April twenty-eighth, where you all would consider issuing a notice of award, uh, to get the contractor on board in early May for the next, or that, that next regular meeting of town council. Just so, just to keep things moving. And then also based on the timeline, we have, uh, what we've established for the RFP for architectural and engineering design services for the Ridgeway Athletic Park baseball fields and pickleball courts. We would be looking at a notice of award at that same special meeting, based on that proposed timeline, so, um, not just one agenda item, but potentially two, uh, really big ones for notice of awards to get those uh, respective firms, contractors in place. Uh, so hoping you all are amenable to looking at your calendars, uh, now to potentially look at a date and then that. And at that week, if you all would like, we could alternatively do a dual poll or something like that, and Brian, Michelle's in the room. Um, yes. It would be. Council, but I hope that makes sense, but I'm trying to be proactive here.
Uh, yeah.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Monday, Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday of that week are better for me.
Monday, Tuesday, I leave town on Wednesday.
I fly home on Monday that day, so.
Tuesday would be best for me.
I could do two there Wednesday.
We're talking, we're talking twenty-fifth.
The.
So. April.
April twenty-ninth.
Those doesn't conflict.
Well, that would be Saturday, that's, which I would go now for.
I probably won't be long by then. Fair to say.
But can we do, can we do Zoom? I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
What's that? Adventure, what?
Yeah. Taking the van to the East Coast.
Right.
So, um, I'd be having to try and zoom in from an RV park somewhere, but.
But.
Probably do that.
Is that our? Because it sounds like Monday, you're out, so we would be missing, anybody else missing on Monday?
I, I might be back by the twenty-seventh, but just on.
I would definitely prefer Tuesday, if possible.
Okay, uh, so, that sounds like.
Are you?
Yeah, because it's, we're just awarding these our, yeah, the, our meetings.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still trying to, so we're doing the twenty-ninth. I will be back.
Okay, so that's, that sounds.
Tuesday, April twenty-ninth at, uh, five-thirty. Okay with everybody?
Yeah, I'll be in the area, but I can zoom in, so it's fine.
Great. Thank you all.
Sorry for the confusion, that's great. You got a date?
Speed of government.
You did it.
All right, um.
He said he's gonna go camping the day before.
That sounds right. I think that brings us to the ten minutes part.
Yes, sir. Buckle up, please. One thing that's not a report, and it just went out today, I understand if you can give a chance to look at it, make sure patience on that. Um, there will, there's a planned closure of North Railroad Street, March thirty-one through, uh, April second, so a three-day period. Um, so that, uh, originally light industrial stormwater, uh, storms are relying can be laid in, it should sound familiar, familiar. The contractor came in in the fall, like actually early fall, and requested to do that work this last fall, they didn't get it done. So it's for the same scope of work. Uh, those days coincide with spring break for the small district. So, uh, from that standpoint, it will work well, the Joyce is currently working with the contractor now to make sure that's solidified, everything gets placed, so just bringing that to everyone's attention now, to put out the word, let's just put it, spot it on the runway, on North Railroad, uh, yeah, well, yeah, before it ends down, yeah, I notice you did. Good question. Um, Angie, you want to talk about the housing then?
Okay. Uh, do I need to talk there?
Just so everybody.
Uh, March twenty-seventh, I would love it if you could all join us, uh, at the Decker Room. We're gonna have a fun event, it's family-friendly, we're gonna be talking about housing strategies, policy, there's kids interactive things going on, there's, um, little polls for you all to take and give your feedback on. Um, and we're trying to get as many people to come as possible. Chaffal will be there, I think somebody from the department or the division of housing, Adola is gonna be there. Um, we also have someone from Telluride Foundation coming, and we're gonna have like a resources table where all of their stuff will be housed, but then the majority of it will be like, what's happening in Ridgeway? So, it's called the Community Conversation, you might see some flower, flyers around town and, um, tell people about it, that'd be great, if you could.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Angie. Um, the GAC filter at the water plant is operational, and everyone is now drinking GAC filtered water. One of our distribution systems, so that, I'm sure y'all are tired of hearing me talk about that and plug it over the years, but that has been five years in the making, uh, a roundup. But it's been a long time in the making.
Well, many years.
So a huge shout out to, you know, Joanne, um, you know, for designing Filter Tech for all their hard work. Granted, they were paid and stuff, but they still worked hard, and then, uh, you know, Chris Bowman, Rodney, all the guys in Public Works, spent a lot of time, especially putting all the plumbing and stuff in place to accommodate the filters. You haven't been up there recently, which I know a lot of y'all haven't. From what it started out as, to just having that chlorine dioxide machine, to now having that, that really big GAC filter, it's, it's impressive.
Michelle, have you ever been up to the water treatment plant? No.
This would maybe be an opportunity, I, yeah.
I haven't been.
I would love to.
Sorry, but given that, I think this might be another field trip opportunity if you. Doesn't have to be a rush, but something.
Yeah, so carry next, out there something.
Um, maybe we could pair that if you haven't been to, like, like, oh, as well. I've seen that one, but anyway, just something to think about.
Yeah, no, great, great thought. Uh, moving ahead, the banner structure project over, uh, State Highway sixty-two, Sherman Street, at Cora Street, we're working with Buckhorn Engineering, uh, right now to, uh, do a geotechnical investigation and get that, uh, designed structurally, structurally designed. Uh, and then, you know, hopefully have that within the next, I'm making this up, you know, month, two-month time period. Uh, get, get approval from C dot, and get it, get a contractor on board to, uh, get that in the ground. And then, uh, brand new structure and way of getting the word out on events, programs, projects, initiatives with the banner structure over the highway.
Yeah, that's gonna be great.
Uh, and then, uh, three RFPs to highlight, we have a housing needs assessment, uh, the, the town is looking to do, you all should remember from budget season, uh, looking to partner with, uh, Urratt County on that. Um, and to issue that request for proposal on, uh, Friday. So like the day after tomorrow, um, there's an RFP for, mentioned it before, uh, earlier, but the our, architectural and engineering design services for the baseball fields and the pickleball courts, uh, aiming to have that issued tomorrow. Uh, and then there's an RFP that has already been issued by Urratt County or the Joint Housing Administrator, that should sound familiar, centered into that IGA back in December, or whatever it was, late twenty-twenty-four, uh, to inform the RFP process and move forward with getting a housing administrator to serve on the town's behalf, the county's behalf, and the city's behalf, provide all those services. So, uh, that's, that's exciting too, uh, the due date for, for, uh, those proposals is, uh, three-thirty on March thirty-one. Annual cleanup day event is April twenty-sixth, so a few days before the special town council meeting that was just set, that's on a Saturday, and I think everyone remembers the drill, but, uh, quite a few roll-offs out there, one for metal as well, that folks can come as they please, and we have some folks out there to help, uh, as necessary, unload, you know, the spring cleaning type stuff that people bring in trucks and, and beyond, so. Uh, in conjunction with that, Alpine Bank is looking to, uh, also do their electronics waste event nearby, probably in the same location they did last year, but haven't heard yet exactly. And then Urratt County Public Health Agency is interested in having, uh, a booth there, or I'm calling it a booth, but like an informational kiosk, I think Becca, the, the nurse is planning to be there, and also to have a vape uh, disposal bin there. Uh, so the aim is to educate members of the public on the proper way to, uh, get rid of, you know, things like vapes and electronic cigarettes and stuff, which should not be disposed of the traditional way of throwing the trash. And then we probably will have, um, mulch out for taking, like we did last year.
That was a big get last year.
Definitely.
Then everyone's favorite event, adopt a highway. At least Terry's favorite.
I'm two for two.
We don't need to, when, since.
Last two.
All right, good, that's a hundred percent.
And last two.
Uh, we don't need to set a time now, just keep this on here if y'all like, but, um, you know, later spring, early summer, we'll need to get another one set based on our commitment, C dot.
Okay.
I'll stop there, unless you guys have any questions.
Where's the pickup lane for Smart and Ridgeway? Palomino.
Yeah, Pal, on Palomino Trail.
Same, same as Bus Hang. Okay.
At least for now.
Yeah.
So we can, really like to continue the conversation of, uh, a better, more central location. It's easier said than done, kind of thing, based on logistics and their needs and everything, so, but that's the stop right now.
Yeah, at least the park, if you're pressed, right.
Okay. Okay. I encourage you all to attend next Tuesday, the Color River District State of the Union. Aren't eighteen sixteen? That's always the meaning. So could you repeat that for? The, uh, State of the River meeting at the Sherbrooke. The Color River District does that every spring. So I'm, upcoming co-partnership, partnership events. Ridgeway River Fest coming up. I don't know, if we're gonna think about the joke.
He's been pretty good. Stephen might just need to be the joke writer.
I forgot. Originally. I didn't hear, sorry.
That's suggesting that Stephen be the designated jokester.
Or you have, you could observe him for months, be a really great one, but.
Like I'm not allowed to.
They're getting reckless. Yeah. All right, any, uh, questions, comments about the management's reporting of issues?
I'll, I'll get a report on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Again, thanks to the work item structure that Preston encouraged to, the committee, the, sorry, to adopt, continue to have very productive meetings, we have, uh, twelve significant work items that we're chipping off routinely. Uh, on the April meeting, we will be introducing a first reading of the, for a net zero, a resolution for net zero by twenty-thirty. We'll also have a presentation by one of the board members about additional progress besides the stuff I talk about. Um, we have also begun drafting a net zero roadmap, which is part and parcel to the resolution, you will see more about that later. Also, we're looking at, uh, a potential ridding cutting event at the Decker Room, once the microthread is installed, that would include, um, participation by incoaction partners, uh, SMPA, uh, describe the nature of the transformation of the room into a resilience hub, introducing it to the public, writing things like that, snacks, some alcohol concentrate. So we're, we're making a incremental progress meeting by meeting and actually getting things done, which is a rule of questioning change to the first couple of years.
Yeah. Great.
Do you have a tentative? Then we welcome a new member. Two new members really sharing this, this.
The last two members, you have last, most recent two members. Um, do you have a tentative date on that?
Sometime in June, we're thinking. We've got work to do before that, we'll get this thing up and running. Great, I think there's, there's, they actually started work.
Yeah. Our pack of Josh, hopefully this week.
Yeah.
Hopefully they're done this week.
Except for the weather, it's coming.
Yeah, it's another storm coming. Um, any other committee reports? Good?
Good.
It's our meeting, I think we're done.
Thank you, Russ.
If there's anything else.
Sorry.